District Board of Education meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yeah?
Here.
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 Here?
Here. We have a quorum. Adopt the agenda.
The agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Post. We have no public comment this evening. Consent agenda?
Move that consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Post. Thank you. All right, now we're going down to information.
Information.
I guess. Financials?
For the year ended fiscal '23 for June, we had a final transfer from one to two of $5,547,785. Our ending fund balance was 24.7 or 6.7 percent. We do have a restricted fund balance of $102,675 for a food service grant we got at the end of the year. And capital fund balance also is restricted for the bond proceeds of $46 million.
Any questions? All right. On project update.
Ryan, who's up first?
No, Karen.
Okay. I just saw Ben walk in, he'll be here in one second. Can we forward those along to?
About program evaluation. Can I do that first?
So Kevin's here with us tonight, and so one of the things that Kevin's going to do, he's going to share with us some of the initial concepts regarding our elementary additions and renovations. We've been talking at length about this for the last several months. Kevin and his team have done some great work on that. And one of the things he's going to present tonight is a larger expansion at Carney Elementary, a larger expansion at Hawthorne Elementary, with smaller revisions occurring both at Dogwood and Southview. And I just want to clarify the rationale behind that. One of the things that we tried to do when we looked at our demographic study is really try to be thoughtful about what's the right size of an elementary school. And through our discussions, one of the things that we don't want to do is have very, very small elementary schools with really, really large elementary schools. So we want to put an investment in our four schools, bring them up to parity, so there's a level of standard there, and really try to extend so that we have three or four-section elementary schools. When I say a three-section school or a four-section school, that'd be three kindergarten classrooms, three first-grade classrooms, three second-grade classrooms. So what our standard that Kevin will be presenting tonight, Carney Elementary will be a four-section school. Dogwood Elementary will be a four-section school. Southview will be a four-section school. And Hawthorne will be the only three-section school. So with that, Kevin's going to walk you through some of our concepts.
Well, I know you've kind of been waiting, 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 and I think that you guys made some great decisions. And here we are today to talk a little bit about where the very first steps of our design is. And pretty much at this point in time, what we've done is we've taken the program from what we had done at Elementary Five, thinking about the future, and applied it to each one of these buildings. And so we have the kind of plus during that time. Dr. Miller had conversations a little bit with some of the teams even before we began this process of design about what are the kind of missing things that they see right now. And so curriculum-wise, providing those kind of spaces within the building. So you have the kind of collaborative areas that we've always been talking about, as well as growth opportunities and space that you need. So we're probably, when we were working from the bond, we had it somewhere in the neighborhood of around 80 classrooms that you would have. And so with what we're showing you tonight, you're somewhere closer to 90. So you're really in this process of using what you have and expanding those. You're gaining some classroom spaces where we're trying to keep the, as Dr. Miller said, trying to keep them very similar and equitable. So this is Carney Elementary. Just as you look at these images, I know it's a little bit hard to see, and it's not as important, I think, that where the kindergarten, first grade, kindergartens are pretty much staying where kindergartens are because of the nature of the spaces that they have. But I'll kind of direct you to the colors. The colors are all classrooms. The blue is all classrooms. The yellow is more commons or collaborative areas. Red is really administrative. And I'll kind of give you a sense of what we're doing there. And then, for instance, that orange or burnt-orange color is media center. So at Carney Elementary School, we're adding some square footage to your offices, just knowing that now that's going to a four-section, giving you, you're going to have some potential, whether you have another administrator at that building or not, counselors, that sort of thing. So we've got a little bit of extra square footage in the office area. And the media center is on that lower level. We're taking a classroom, and then we're also building out right in there where you see that area right there. So that's new square footage. And then on the backside of the building, kind of right in the knuckle of where we have all of the corridor space, instead of walking out to the playground, you're now going to be walking through a space that takes you to a two-story classroom wing. And so blue, there'll be four classrooms there. There'll be, you see the yellow area, that's collaborative area. And then the green, I should have said something about that earlier. Green is typically resource and special education programs, or any kind of, like, gate is one of those programs, and your DLC and things like that. So. And so this is the first floor. The gym is staying where it's at, commons, where the kitchen and commons, all of that. So the wing that's at the top, you can see a dashed line that goes all the way around that. So the way that, the part of the reason why that's all offset is we've got a new chiller that just was put in right over in that area, right behind the gym. And we've had to offset that a little bit. Yes, we are going to take up a little space on the playground. And unfortunately, we're going to lose a tree that's right there. So. Question?
How does it change parking, traffic patterns, things like that?
In reality, there shouldn't be any traffic patterns. We're missing, we're leaving the parking that's back there now. I think it's teacher parking area, we're keeping that open. It's not, that addition won't go far enough to be messing with any of that. The traffic out front, that really goes out to about where the canopy is. So we're not to the, about the edge of the canopy, so the curb will run right by that. So. So no change in traffic patterns there at all.
What about your parking? Are you going to add parking to the back?
We're not, right now, we haven't talked about adding parking. So, I mean, we're not displacing any parking that's already there. But if you're thinking, are you thinking about wanting more parking?
I'm just asking where you're going to put all the teachers.
Yeah. Well, that's.
Adding rooms, you're maybe adding staff, so you may be adding parking.
Yeah, well, we're not displacing any parking.
There's a lot of parking on the north or the south end.
Enough for any changes.
Are you considering putting a door in the gym for car riders? Have you thought about that?
A door into?
A door on the north side that would allow, let's, if you had car riders in the gym after school, you could release directly from the gym?
We haven't had that conversation.
Okay.
That certainly, bringing that up, we can certainly.
If someone who did car duty in that building, I know it would be appreciated.
I do know, I happened to be there the other day when there was a, there must have been summer school classes, and students and parents were backing up right there to pick up kids. And they were, and then some of the parents were going out to the front so they could see them walk out the front door and come around. So that's probably an issue associated with that, so.
This still needs to go through a rent cycle with teachers and staff, so that's.
Yeah, we're really at the, what you're seeing is a very, very early stages. We have shared this with some of your directors and curriculum. And so we've gotten some feedback from them also before we actually put it in front of teachers and say, this has been a, you know, this is kind of where we're at. Because we still will go through, we'll go through a phase with all of these plans where we'll actually talk to the teachers about their classrooms, and we'll talk to them about all of these things. And so I'm sure that that's going to come up if that's, if there's an issue there.
So just to circle back to the parking, just like open house, like those kind of things. We're adding more students, we're adding more families. I don't, I don't have a solution, it's just something to consider.
Sure.
As we're moving forward on those big events.
There is quite a bit of parking though on that.
Yeah, but you're adding more, I mean, it's pretty packed now. So you're adding, you're increasing the student population. I think it's just something to at least consider and put some pencil or paper and figure out.
We can, we can do that.
You know, just to.
Definitely. What we would typically, how many parking we would typically have for a certain size school.
Right, and just see what the deficiency is.
Because you certainly have less parking here than you have at Dogwood.
Right.
So, and we're going to have the same size school, same with Southview. So. We do understand that. Okay? So on to the second floor. So this is, that's the lower floor, and here's the second floor. You can see grade levels. We also have created an area that, you know, we were, when we were going through this whole entire process of talking about collaborative learning and creating spaces that students and teachers can be in and in a comfortable manner. That yellow that you see on that level there is going to be used by one of the grade levels, and then the other one on the right-hand side will be used by the other. And then up, we'd also, thank you, Ryan, you're doing a great job. So anyway, and so, and resources, so we have, we have some spaces that will be flexible. They'll be about the size of a classroom. So as time goes on, if you had a growth spurt and you needed to have another classroom, you do have that ability to take over a classroom and do that. Now, you would displace something, but the spaces are there. Trying to create a kind of a hub where stairs and circulation will all be right there at that corner. So students up, and trying to make it as close as we could. When we were looking at where would be the best place to add students, that sort of really came to the forefront. And then just giving them the ability to get down to the cafeteria in a quick fashion, so. And not, not trying to take the middle of the playground and segment it into two pieces, so. So that's Carney Elementary. The next, the next plan is Hawthorne. And both of these buildings, just to let you know, we did have these 3D scan because some of these, we did not have good drawings for. So now you have 3D scan of those spaces, and you'll end up with electronic drawings that will be accurate as we move forward. Same thing with colors. Blue is your classrooms. And where it's hatched, both directions, that's new. Where it's hatched just in one direction, that means we're renovating significantly in those areas. You can see the collaborative areas. The, what the intent here is to open up those spaces as much as possible so that there's all kinds of activity that can happen in those. And we'll be intentional about the things that will be put in there so that the teachers have resources right there at, quickly, so that when students go out there to do activities, they just can go to those things and not be metered or anything. They have the ability to do what they need to do. What we've done significantly here is we've left the kitchen where it's at. Moving it, we had considered moving the kitchen just because of where it was at and the transport of food down the hall over to the serving line, plus the commons area kind of ended up being, you had to walk through that, bisecting through. So what we've done is we've taken that space that exists there now. We have opened that up a little bit just so that when you're coming into the building, you're not walking directly into the common space. And we have, we do have some special, you can see the specialists that are around that entire area. And then we've also taken some space there at the library to put reading and the, yes, and therapy in there. So that is, some of that space. And then, and then one of the things that I didn't talk about is also we wanted to create space for professional learning space for teachers and a place for them to be able to go as a group and do collaboration themselves. So we've created that right in the hub of the, in the center there behind the gymnasium. The other is that large yellow area there by the kitchen. We're taking that space, and that's going to be turned into the commons. We wanted, yes.
Square footage for commons before, after, is it the same?
It's, it's actually a little bit bigger.
Is it?
Yep. Just a little bit, not much. We needed, we needed it to be just a little bit larger because we are adding that additional grade level. So trying to get it so that we're not eating from 10:40 to 1 o'clock. So that's it, or at least that's our goal, try to hit that, so. The other is, it looks as though we're going to have enough bathrooms, but we're just maintaining, each one of these, we're, the next level of us is actually doing some code studies and identifying those kind of, those kind of issues if there are any. So that is, and leaving a lot of the same, the same spaces. There are some resource spaces that we're talking about, and we have, and I think we'll be discussing those with the teachers and staff as we close up some of the space or we move things around just to make sure that they agree that those are the right locations for things. Again, here, we're not doing too much to the office area just because we are putting some of the services in the center of the building. Any questions on Hawthorne? Now, we haven't done any, any studies here about adding parking either, so that's something that we'll spend a little bit of time here. Maybe you have a little bit more parking here than you do it.
We had talked preliminarily about the traffic pattern.
Yes. Traffic pattern is a big, is a big thing here that we might have to discuss a little bit about.
Yeah.
The other thing is that we are taking a little bit. We tried to minimize as much as we can, but we are taking a little bit from the playground. And we'll look at pathways for kids to get to playground as we start the process of construction. Okay? Next. Dogwood, Dogwood, again, locations are similar, we've got your colors. One of the things that we have done is we have created some small resource spaces in that storage area. We haven't talked to teachers about this, but one of the things would be is there is a door, an exit door in each one of those. They're safe to not have those exits, and we would grab some of that space there. Again, working into that with the teachers. What we are doing here is we are displacing the media center. The orange you can see now is an addition. We are putting in all of the special education, any kind of, again, resource spaces, gate, DLC, all of those in the center, reading, speech, OTPT, all in the center of the space. Easy access from every classroom for those, those that, some of the therapists and those that do travel, counselors that might travel to some of those spaces, they will be able to use those green spaces that are in each one of those pod areas as well as their home base, so. And then the media center will be very close to the same size, a little bit, probably very close to the same size as what is already there because it is a four-section.
Kevin, am I correct that some of those green spaces in the center, if we have a larger classroom section, it will provide enough flexibility at Dogwood if they have a classroom that has to go to five sections? We have a classroom space available?
Yes. And all of those, if you see that really dark line right across there, Ryan's really, really good. Those are movable walls. So the spaces, and they're not your, what you think of as movable walls that are just an accordion type, very thin. These are, these are designed to have acoustical separation. So when they stay that way, there'll be privacy between. But when you want to pull them out of the way and do a classroom, you can do it. Not in all the buildings, not just here. Okay? Any other questions here? Hadn't thought about doing anything because we really, I think you've got parking out here. It's already the size that it is. I think unless you're having issues, we think that we're probably in pretty good shape here. Okay? Next. Southview. Same thing. You know, Southview has always had more classrooms. When we originally were doing this, we were actually taking one of these classrooms away to make a collaborative area. You really have some pretty large collaborative areas already in each pod. And so we made sure that we could make those happen. In reality, the two areas that we are spending a significant amount of time on was, I mean, as far as new construction is really in that office space, focusing on adding a little bit of office area right out there in the front. And then using that larger area, the, really the entry, to kind of expand your common space. You can see that crosshatch right there. We're going to take that over, and we're going to, we're going to have a movable wall where the existing wall is. And we're going to take over that space and use that for everyday use. But on the weekends, you could close that. And we're also looking into, how do we, how do we separate this? So if you need your gyms to be open on the weekends, there's not lots of people going down the classroom wing side. So we'll take that into consideration and see how we can make that work well. Same thing, classrooms are blue, the yellow is the collaboration areas. That's green spaces that are, that are resources, which is also, again, places where teachers and administrators are going to be able to use those as resource spaces and maker spaces, so. There is, again, teacher collaboration in each one of these specifically, tip, so. So not a lot of additions, just some modifications here mostly in the, on the academic side. We're just not doing a whole lot. But each building, there is an allocation in your budget for furniture. Making some decisions about a furniture that is a little bit more collaborative, a little bit more easily moved by students and staff. And I think there's a good thing is, is that over the last 10 years, there's been a pretty good analysis of use of types of furniture, and we'll be able to bring that to bear when we, when you start selecting some of that stuff. So to make these spaces collaborative. Any questions on Southview? That took a lot longer than I thought I should. I, when we start talking about architecture, it's too, just get going, so. It's exciting. I think it's going to change the perspective of each one of your buildings, and it'll be, I hope it's exciting for the teachers to. Any other questions?
One thing is you guys are doing your rents, as you call it, safety, security, front entries, secure entries, those kind of things. I would hope that those are part of your. I know that they, I know you're already on top of it, Kevin, but I just want to make sure that we understand that we need to be working on the safety and security of every one of those buildings on entry.
Yep, that is absolutely.
Okay.
Absolute. And part of the reason why we're working with, doing a little bit of each one of the office areas is because of that, so.
Well done.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. So got a construction progress report. So last month was kind of the discovery month, so we got to do a lot of demolition, found out some things about the middle school we didn't know. This month has been kind of the rough-in month. And then here in these next couple of weeks is kind of the finish-out. So things are going very well overall through the project. So we've got a few pictures of each one. This is early childhood center. So the things that you're seeing here, ceiling grid went in this week, which is a big step for us. That means we've got all our walls done, walls are painted. So you put in the ceiling grid, and now they're dropping in light fixtures, putting in HVAC diffusers, and we'll start dropping tile probably Friday. So then that just leaves flooring, so that starts next week. So that's kind of the last touch as we get through these spaces. So it's finishing pretty quickly, all things look good here. And yeah, we should be in good shape schedule-wise. The middle school, our friend, the middle school. So we found quite a few things, did some different structural repairs and things as things came up when we tore them out, but we're kind of through all of those. So the big thing that you'll see here is the back wall, that's tile on the wall right now. So that's a really good sign for bathrooms because you put in tile, then you put in epoxy floors, then fixtures, and you're out of there. So got a couple pictures of the restroom, let's go to the next. Let's go to the next one. Here's a smaller one. So that's the big activity this week through probably the middle of next week is tile. Then resinous floors go in each space, and then fixtures, and we walk out of those spaces. So things are going well there. Next photo. Here is the theater. So big day today in the theater. This picture's a few days old. They actually started installing seats today. So the things that are new, we've got all of the wall work done. So you can see the acoustical panels on the walls. All the paint is done, all the overhead ceiling work is done. The floor was sealed after, after this picture was taken. Seats will go in for about a week and a half. And then, then we start putting in speakers, putting in the theatrical lighting. And then, hmm, early August is when curtains start going in, things like that. So it's really cleaning up nice. And then, yeah, after seats, carpet will go in throughout the space, too. So things are looking really well in this space. And I know we've always kind of talked about theater equipment, things like that. We think we're going to have it all by school start, and it's going to be turned over and done. So that's, we're really excited about that. And then, I don't know if we got a junior high photo. I'll just talk to it. The junior high roof's going well. They're probably eighty-five percent of the way through the roof. Early August is when that thing's going to button up, so everything's going well there. We had to tear out some interior partition walls. Those were the ones that cracked. After we fixed the foundation over there, we took out the walls, put the new walls back in. We're painting those spaces right now, and then we'll clean them up probably next week. So that's going to have an early finish there. So all in all, things are moving very well. It's going to clean up nice and be ready for school. So. Any questions for me? Oh, yeah, here's, this is in the junior high. This is one of those walls, so we had to just take out a portion of it, take out the ceiling. It's all put back, and it's getting painted as we speak. So that should be good.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Board member comments? Anybody have any comments? We've done a lot of talking tonight, so nobody has anything else to say?
I miss having recognitions tonight.
It is summer.
It's summer.
We'll recognize the folks who came to the meeting tonight. We appreciate y'all being here. And we did have a very nice dinner. Lori's gone, but please thank her for our dinner. And important dates. August tenth, new teachers begin. August fourteenth, all the teachers come back. August sixteenth, board meeting. August eighteenth, convocation. August twenty-second, first day of school. And am I allowed to say that we have an election? It's on here. Right, we do have a levy on August eighth. So that's probably the first thing of importance on the list. So, all right. Miscellaneous.
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in August, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Start it. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mary, is it call?
Yes.
John, current?
Yes.
Mike, sir?
Yes.
Lisa, Baskus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We're adjourned.
The next one.